We got five thirty, guys. Would you guys like to lead us in the pledge to the road commissions here? Thank you. Roka?
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew. Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Frank Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections, commissioners?
Make a motion to it.
You don't need a motion. Are there any additions or corrections?
We wanted to add discussion regarding compensation for the animal control officer.
Well, you want that under discussion items?
Sure.
Animal control officer. Item D.
Sure. Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections? Item three, public comment. This is a public comment for agenda items only. Come on up. You know the rules. Speak your name. I have three minutes and speak all you can.
I'm a stander stander.
Please have a seat. You have the floor. Your name, please.
My name is Brandy Curtis. A resident of Ogama County and an active employee of the Ogama County Road Commission. Here as a citizen of Ogama County, I am here to support the elimination of healthcare for the road commissioners in Ogama County. When reviewing the compensation of Ogama County road commissioners receiving many benefits that are same as active employees, therefore, in essence, when the road commissioners are negotiating union contracts, they are negotiating their own benefits. I feel this is a conflict of interest. Commissioners are there to serve, not to receive healthcare benefits. Many road commissions made funding sources Michigan Transportation Fund, also known as MTF. When comparing the Ogama County Road Commission to other road commissions with similar MTF, seven of the ten do not offer healthcare insurance commissioners. I would request the board remove the healthcare benefit and opt out for commissioners of Ogama County Road Commission. For calendar year 2024, commissioners who opted into healthcare have wages and benefits ranging from $21,000 to $26,000. Commissioners who opted out, wages and benefits of approximately $8,000 vastly uneven and partial. I agree the commissioners have made many sacrifices through the years. We all have. I do agree with the wage increase. I do not agree with commissioners receiving health benefits. Our costs continue to increase and funding decreasing. There will come a time when even harder decisions will have to be made, and this will affect the workforce and our ability to maintain the rules.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment in the room on agenda items? Public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments. Wait for a Dan Shelton Road Commission related to road commission health insurance benefits. Come on up, sir. Have a seat. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. As Brandy said, I'm supporting eliminating it too. Health insurance for road commissioners. I've been on the board for twenty-two years, way back when, because everybody knows was a lot cheaper. And the costs are driving, you know, they just keep going up. You know, this year was seventeen percent increase. And so it is a part-time job. I never came to this board in twenty-two years and asked for a salary increase because of, I always felt that the health insurance increases covered our salary increases. So the salary has remained the same since, well, it was changed before I took office, so probably two thousand and three or four, somewhere in there. And then it's $1,200 a year currently and a hundred dollars a meeting. The per diem rate, because we're a three-member board, I would like to make it an incentive to show up for meetings because, you know, if somebody's sick and somebody's on vacation, we don't have a quorum. We can't pay bills. So I would like to, that's why the per diem meetings increased. So maybe you could schedule your vacations around your meetings. So that's the point of why it's that way. It'll be an overall savings to the road commission. Brandy, do you happen to have a number? How much you approximately would save if you went with eliminating and these salaries?
Roughly thirty thousand a year.
Yeah, our funding level. I just did a meeting today and sixty-five percent of our budget is Michigan Transportation Fund money. And the gallons of gas, we get our revenue from gallons of gas plus the license plate fees. Gallons of gas that are consumed in Michigan have declined since two thousand and three, and it's going down, 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 down. So I, as a board member, I don't look at just this year's budget. I'll look at trends down the line, what's gonna happen. And unless the legislature does something, which the last time it took twenty years for them to do something. So I would rather try to cut costs now and get ahead of the game a little bit than to wait. So there's two proposals there. One of them raises the salary for the chair to thirty-five hundred a year, members to three thousand a year. Raises the per diem meeting from a hundred dollars a meeting to two hundred dollars a meeting, night meeting is fifty dollars a meeting. Travel miles are per IRS regulations. That's the same. And I would like the option for the commissioners to purchase health insurance, vision and dental at a hundred percent cost through the road commission. Because Mesa is the best option out there, probably under sixty-five. Mesa Health Insurance. The other one is to continue currently, if you're sixty-five years old. And I signed up for Medicare at sixty-five. We have one commissioner who has not. And there's nothing in there that says that we can force him to sign up for Medicare. He says he signed, we had a meeting Wednesday. He said he signed up the day before, but I don't, not say any dinner or anything, but I have no way of knowing. So he's sixty-nine years old. He's been on our plan for four years, and he had the ability to sign up for Medicare. So that was initially, I mean, I was, if he would have signed up when he turned sixty-five, I wouldn't have come back and asked for a salary increase or anything like that. But my preference is you go with proposal A. And if not, at least force him and proposal B, it forces somebody in the future to sign up for Medicare. And I believe that, you know, it's a benefit that the employer pays in, the employee pays in, why not use it?
You said the cost at a hundred percent. And when you said it, you said at the road commission. Did you mean at the employee, the employee, correct? For the option of the commissioners to purchase health insurance, vision and dental at a hundred percent cost. Their cost, correct?
The road commission cost.
The person would pay it.
That's what I, okay. When, how I understood it when you said it is, it sounds like it was a hundred percent cost.
No, 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 no.
That's, that's what I thought you meant.
Price.
Okay.
The price.
Their cost, correct. Okay. Questions? I'm sorry. Commissioner Scott?
It'd be the commissioner, there'd be a price would, would be, it's just the cost of the right. So the recommendations are coming, you know, I mean, we all know that the county commission sets the road commission's commissioners' salaries and stuff. So all this money comes out of their budget. Mr. Shelton's been on the board for twenty-two years. He's now chairman again. And his recommendations, A, I think that is the way to go.
Yeah, it was effective October first is when, that's our fiscal year. This would take place then.
So October first of next year?
No, this year.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, that, yeah. So October first is quite a ways away. Okay. Commissioner Wiltie?
As Commissioner lays on with the road commission along with Commissioner Scott, we were both at the meeting yesterday, and this was a big topic, and I understand why. I can see the cost savings. It sounded like all three commissioners felt like this could be an option, that they would, they would agree to it. So I don't see any problem at all. Like Commissioner Scott said, it's, it comes out of the road commission budget. It has nothing to do with our general fund budget, so.
Commissioner Mayhew?
That's what he wants. That's all he'll do.
Commissioner Serbrook. I agree with the polls like, and it's gonna be a cost savings anyway, even if it came out of somebody else's budget, it's gonna save whatever budget that comes out of, according to Brandy, about thirty thousand dollars a year. So it's a cost savings to the road commission, you know?
Yeah, thirty thousand a year over ten years, three hundred thousand.
Exactly. And as you said, you know, revenue from gas is just gonna keep going down because, you know, there's this big push for electric vehicles, but even if weren't for that, there's still EPA mandates for vehicles to get better gas mileage, hence, you know, less use of gas with the gas taxes, you know, revenues receiving that are gonna go down. It's just gonna keep, as Dan says, it's gonna keep going down, so. I'm fully supportive of proposal A.
What are the other commissioners' opinions?
They were, they understand it. You know, I don't think that there wasn't any opposition to us.
No.
There wasn't any opposition to it.
You guys have two meetings a month? Isn't every other week?
Every other, well, we have thirteen meetings a year, every other Wednesday. So there's twenty-six.
Twenty-six meetings a year.
Twenty-six meetings a year, excuse me.
I, again, agree with, or I, I'm going to agree with what you're asking for, which is proposal A. I just do wanna state that your guys' job is very similar to ours. Very thankless.
Oh, it's a thankless job, you know, and then we can always come back and ask you for more money if we get too much heat, you know?
This is only the second time I've seen you and all the time, the amount of time I've been sitting here. So you guys obviously don't come here very often. The other time was something different, and it was kind of a last minute. But again, I wanted to give recognition to you guys. Your job is very difficult. You receive a lot of complaints. Not sure how many positive.
Most of them go through the staff. I gotta be honest.
That's good, but I know you have the meetings. Some of these, let's do attend the meetings, so.
Oh, yeah. Every now and then, I've been called.
I'm giving you a compliment here. Be quiet. Okay?
I have one, one person, I have one person filming one time and said you think you're God.
And you've been on the board a long time. And again, it's, I'm saying thank you as, as residents can see.
Well, thank you.
There's not a high income, a high reimbursement for this job. So obviously, you do it for the right reasons, which is you wanna be there.
Right.
So if this is what you guys want, this proposal A, it saves the road commission money. Unfortunately, again, it doesn't make your guys' job any easier.
No.
And hopefully, this doesn't change individuals in the future wanting to serve on the road commission.
Well, you guys, you know, you, obviously, you guys have more committee meetings than we do. But you also don't have health insurance. I mean, just, it's just the cost of health insurance is just insane.
Hundred percent.
It's not gonna go down.
Nope, agreed, agreed. Just wanna thank you for your work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item B, Tony Dubay, Transit Director, fiscal year 2026 budget.
Evening, commissioners.
Hi, how are you?
Well, can't complain. Nobody will listen.
We're here. We're listening.
How much is the kind of cost? That's the next question, right? I'm here today to, I'm sure you guys have this in your tablets, but I'm in the process right now of submitting our FY26 application. I'm not, what that includes is our budget and then two forms that Commissioner David and Rex needs. So just seeing if you guys had any questions about it or any discussion.
Commissioner Wiltie, I think you're on the transit board. Do you have anything to add to this?
Well, we had our Transit Committee this morning, and Mark has taken, taken over there, Commissioner Serbrook, and glad to have him on board. And, and obviously, you know, looking at the two thousand and twenty-six, and we know with the loss of the millage, you know, one of the tough decisions that we had to make, and there was a valid reason for it, with putting a temporary stop to the Saturday services. You know, you can see here that out of our fund balance, we're looking at around $515,000 gonna be pulled out of that fund balance. And, you know, no millage backing up for revenue, state funding's continuing to go down. So it's, it's a little nerve-wracking, but Tony's doing a really good job, and I think we just need to move forward and see what the future holds.
So if I'm looking at this correct, the operational expenses, operational expense, wage expense. Didn't, didn't fluctuate a whole lot from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-five, did it?
Not a whole lot, but we did have an increase in our wages. A lot of that is due to, obviously, cutting away Saturday service. But with the decrease in our wages, we had an increase in our operational expenses. With submitting a budget effectively two years in advance, it's, it's hard to, I guess, put a true number into what our actual expenses are going to be. So, I mean, we won't be able to tell what they are until we're in the current fiscal year. So this is, to my best knowledge, again, what we're expected to pay to keep the transit operational in FY26. The biggest takeaway, again, it's a concern I addressed to the committee and Commissioner Wiltie pretty much said it earlier, it's the local operating that we're gonna have to spend in FY26 to keep afloat. That's a really big concern of mine, as well as our state operating assistance, as already mentioned. We've already gone down from forty percent to thirty, and it's expected that in FY27, it's gonna go down even more. So just some things to keep, keep in mind of as the months go on, so.
Commissioner Serbrook, you're on the board as well. Do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add. He's doing a good job, and he explained this to us in much detail this morning, so.
I like this, that you put on our iPads. It's pretty simple. It's easy to follow. I, I like this. Commissioner Serbrook, or excuse me, Commissioner Scott.
No, I think this is pretty thorough here. We'll just have to look through the year, and if we have to cut back some more, I have to cut back some more, you know?
Right.
But just my advice would be be flexible, be able to take changes, you know?
Right now, is there any, are you guys fully staffed?
Yes, so this is based off of what we are currently staffed at right now.
Do you have anything, Commissioner Mayhew? Chris?
We did have some brief discussion in our meeting today about possibly consolidating some relatives if we need to down the road. So, I mean, Tony's got a worst-case scenario contingency in the back of his mind. It's not on paper yet, but, you know, he's well aware of the fact that if need be, he's looking at where he could slice and dice some more, so to speak.
Is Ray officially done?
Ray is officially retired, so.
Did, was there ever like a gathering for him?
Yes, we did one at the transit facility, so.
Good. And he's doing well?
He's doing great. I talked to him before I got here, so.
Thank you.
Yep. The other thing that I need to mention as well, our application is due on February first, so the documents that need to be signed, I have to have back.
Okay. That's not what you sent me?
That's, no, that was for operating assistance.
Okay, so is it gonna be electric, electronic?
I sent these over to him.
Okay.
For you.
The one on the iPad.
Right, it's the contract clause certification that you will sign, and then for Breck, she'll need to sign the resolution.
Okay, so we have to pass it now, or we have to have it done? Okay.
Right.
We're gonna make sure we have it by your deadline. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Item BRC, Mike Bowers, Emergency Management Coordinator, related to hazardous mitigation plan. Mike, come on up.
How are you all tonight?
Good, how are you all?
Good. Doing well. Thank you. So tonight's subject is the actual contract with the third-party supplier to help us organize and manage our, the process of renewing our hazard mitigation plan. This is directly connected to the grant work that we had already done in two thousand and twenty-four in order to acquire the grant to get this accomplished. I believe Tim gave you guys the whole fifty-three-page contract, which the bulk of that is actually the scope of work that you guys received back in two thousand and twenty-four. And only the first seven pages are actually like the contract part. I'm obviously not a lawyer or anything like that, and I don't have a lot of experience at this, but the contract looked pretty standard to me. I'm sure you guys will go through it a lot closer before you authorize a signature on it. But some, some things to note in Exhibit A, in the scope of work. They, at the end of it, they call Exhibit B the fee schedule. And the fee schedule creates the forty-four thousand, four fifty into five different payments. The third payment is the largest. The third payment is where they will have the greatest expense for themselves. They will put out public announcements and, and mailing lists and stuff for the general public in the county to be able to, to make comment on things that they see, things that we might need to have hazard mitigations and on. So the one thing I do not know yet, I'm waiting for a return from FEMA about it, is whether or not the, we'll be able to reimburse individually for each payment. My EMHSD grants work that way. We spend the money. We show them the council check, and they reimburse. Because this is a much more extended project, I'm not positive if they're going to reimburse each individual to five payments. Or FEMA is going to say, no, we wanna see a completed approved hazard mitigation plan. I do not believe that that's going to be the interest from FEMA. I just wanna be very upfront with you guys about it may take a while before you see your forty-four thousand dollars back. So I don't know, but I expect to have that answer before the board meeting next week, and Tim will be able to, to let you guys know whether or not FEMA will let those expenses be reimbursed five times. So that is what the answer that I do expect, but it's the one question that I don't have the answer for yet. One thing I really liked about their contract was their Exhibit C. So it is the, all the regulations for procurement under federal grants. They actually print it and cite it that it follows. We are on the very final page. Well, it's actually page seven of what you've got. It's the final page of what I printed. We are services included, procured by the client as a state with FEMA grand recipient. We are the sub-recipient for FEMA contract provisions set forth in, in Exhibit C. So we do qualify. We have already secured the funding. The total grant is sixty-one thousand dollars. We will pay out forty-four thousand, five hundred, forty-four thousand, four fifty, I think, is the exact number. That is what we will pay out to the third party. The, the rest of that grant is for us to use as a contribution in kind. And the plan is if we can have twenty people at ten meetings, our contribution in kind will be paid one hundred percent. It'll cost the county zero dollars. So, but there is a potential that, you know, we won't match that completely, and there may be a bill for the county at the end. That bill will not, absolutely will not be more than ten thousand dollars at the very maximum. That's basically nobody showing up at my, at my meetings and nobody contributing within the county. Breck is going to send me the email list of all of the townships and the people that we want included in our government to participate in this. And then at our very first meeting with all of those people, they will be cited to look for the private industry investors, people who would be vested in wanting to participate, and then they will be invited in also. Every person that comes to these meetings will be paid, not paid. Our contribution will be anywhere between thirty and fifty-five dollars, depending on their stature in the community and/or their private industry as their position, so.
Thank you. Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't. I've been always impressed at how well I guess I handle on all this.
I think it really, really.
No, I mean, the only thing is, you know, and you said you'd have the answer, but next to whether or not as the county runs the money, just the reimbursement cycle, if they'll, you know?
This is the part of a hazard mitigation plan that I've never done, the actual money portion. That was already, already completed before I entered into my previous three hazard mitigation plans.
And I kinda, I glanced at this earlier today, and of course, you know, at fifty-some odd pages, I didn't, I'll be honest, I didn't read it, you know, completely through. I just kinda skimmed it. Did they give you a timeline as to when it would be complete?
Yes, their timeline is six months, which is like.
So it'd still be within fiscal year, even if we didn't get reimbursed.
Correct.
On a step.
Will still be within this fiscal year.
So we front the whole forty-four, five or forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, we'll still get it back within this fiscal year.
Correct.
So we'd still be good then.
But I, I like the ninety to one hundred and twenty days that most of my grants are.
Commissioner Mayhew? Commissioner Scott?
Sounds good to me.
Commissioner Wiltie?
As I always say, it's a huge ask for us. We see all these natural disasters and everything that we hope never happens here, but if it does, we need to be prepared.
Continually.
Appreciate what you do, Mike.
Thank you. Oh, there is one more thing that goes with this. If you do look through the center part of the scope of practice, they talk about Odysseus. It's their computer program for emergency management management, and it is actually full scope of, of emergency management, all levels of response and recovery and mitigation. And it will actually help me with planning, organizing, and, and creating an even further robust hazard, or emergency management program. And also prepare the next person to come and take my place.
So if there's not, I guess I wanna make sure I understand this correctly. If there's not, you're not sure how much reimbursement we're gonna get?
No, I'm not sure how quickly you're going to get.
How quickly, but we are gonna get.
You'll get forty-four thousand, you'll get the forty-four thousand, four fifty back.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to verify.
That is what you are spending.
What was it, sixty-one thousand?
So the sixty-one thousand, the, so it's a twenty-five, seventy-five grand.
Okay.
In percentages. So FEMA pays seventy-five percent.
Okay.
We pay twenty-five percent. So in order to get all of our money back, that forty-four, four fifty back, we have to spend sixty-one thousand dollars to have our twenty-five percent contribution. Okay, so that's where our contribution in kind comes in. And that's where the participation throughout the county comes in. By the county participating in this, they give us contribution in kind dollar amounts for every person hourly in order to create our twenty-five percent instead of saying, this is a twenty-five, seventy-five percent. We're gonna pay the forty-four thousand, four fifty. You're going to pay the fifteen thousand and change. I've already secured fifty-five hundred through our GIS mapping program costs. They accepted, FEMA accepted both my request for the cost for the GIS programming, which is five thousand, five hundred dollars a year. So that will go into our contribution in kind automatically. And that reduces us down to about five, or about ten thousand dollars in man hours contributing and working.
They recognize people's time and apply a dollar figure to it.
So we have to spend twenty-five percent, but we're gonna be reimbursed for that as well. We just have to record.
Well, in, in, in the end, if you will, if you will, say, say, for example, we only, we only had contribution in kind totaling ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so when you add that to the. Okay, so when you add that to the forty-four four fifty, now we're at fifty-four four forty fifty.
Right.
And they're going to divide that seventy-five twenty-five. And what they're going to reimburse in the end will be the seventy-five twenty-five of that, which would create money out of our pocket.
Do you have the funds to, to make this whole?
Do I?
Does, does the emergency manager, like, where's this money coming from then?
You.
Do we have that?
I, 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 I mean.
So this isn't, do, where, where?
Emergency management doesn't actually have like.
Where are we getting this money from?
It, it's, um, it's like virtually any other state program. It's a reimburse, reimbursement grant. So we have to spend the money upfront, send our invoices to the state, this kind of FEMA, whomever, and then they reimburse us. So to answer your question, I would defer to the treasurer and exactly how the dynamics of that work internally. You've heard Karen talk at times about the giving me the common cash fund.
In essence, in essence, your emergency management is going to have cost overrun in the expenditure lines until that reimbursement comes in as a revenue. The offsetting expenses within the general fund, emergency management section of your general fund budget.
Tim, we'll get to the quarterly adjustments. We actually have an example of that. Or I'll show you exactly how that's working. You'll, you'll see one of the grant reimbursements actually show up.
Because at the end of this, no matter what, the reimbursement's not gonna be a hundred percent. It's not gonna cover all of these funds.
It will if we get twenty people for ten meetings.
It's, it, like I said, they recognize their time. It's every given monetary contribution for them to recognize it. So as long as he meets his goal of getting, you know, people to participate, they will recognize that as a contribution in kind and therefore.
An inline example would be if we have twenty people for ten meetings, our twenty-five percent will be a hundred percent covered. And there will be zero cost. But if we had ten people for ten meetings, you can expect us to have to pay five thousand dollars.
Karen, do you have something to add to that?
In my mind, if you fall short of that volunteerism, there is a cost.
That's what I'm asking.
There, there, there is. There will be a reduction in the reimbursement of the forty-four four fifty.
That's what I'm asking. Where is the money? We don't know how much we're gonna have to pay. Where is this money going? And I think this is a great thing. I'm just asking this question. Seventy-five percent is seventy-five percent. We don't know if we're gonna get the other twenty-five cent percent and we may have to pay it, which is a substantial amount of, I'm not cute, but there is money. So where's this coming from?
That, you, somebody said the word, but the contingency line would cover that, which right now is twenty-five thousand did it or something like that.
Is this mandatory?
To have a hazard mitigation plan?
This what you're doing right here.
If we want to be protected by the state and FEMA, if a disaster happens, yes.
So this that we're, you're, you're asking for is a mandatory hazardous mitigation?
It's not mandatory. It's only mandatory if we want to be able to apply to the state and FEMA for reimbursements if we had a disaster.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Mike, I've been here for over two years. You've come to us a number of times, you know, asking for this type of setup. We know in a set amount of time, we get funding back. Have you, have you ever not been able to basically back what you said? Have we ever had to come out of pocket?
I have not failed to date in four and a half years to produce what I've said in any of the four counties. But this is a little bit different. And, uh, I will be relying some on the five of you to make sure to get to your townships and say, hey, you have to send just one person, just anybody, it can be a citizen. Somebody from your township has to come to this. And, and if we get that, then yeah, I'm extremely confident we'll get the twenty people in ten meetings and get this paid for.
And, and that's an excellent point, but most of your, most of what you've done in the past, your grants have been a hundred percent.
Correct. Most of those grants, the EMHSD grants are a hundred percent reimbursements. Correct.
Commissioner Scott?
No, I'm fine. Historically, he's, he's done it.
You know, it's why I've been so forward with you guys that there is a risk this time. There, there, there really truly is, and that risk could be as much as ten thousand dollars.
One more comment.
Commissioner Wilson.
So it appears to me though, we just need to stay steady on this and be a little aggressive to make sure that these people are in place.
Absolutely.
So that you could communicate with us if you're seeing a lack of participation from a certain township. And then we could really make sure that that participation happens.
Absolutely. I can even come in once a month and give a report at the committee of the whole or, or the regular board meeting. And once a month, I can come and give you guys a five-minute report. This is where we are. This is how it's going. These are the people that are participating. Just all of that'll be easily documented.
Commissioner Serbik, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Mayhem.
Some people show up, they have, they have to go to all ten meetings or can they come to one and?
No, and anybody, you know, one person can come each meeting from that township. It's not going to be as productive because we really want people who understand the process. And, and they start learning the process with the first meeting and, and going forward. But, uh, no, it could be ten different people from that township uh, showing up. They, we just tried every set, every person that does it and how many hours they contributed.
Where are these meetings gonna be?
Uh, over at the, uh, Annex Building.
I, I think this is excellent. I'm sure you're definitely gonna put the work in as you always do. Ten people doesn't sound like a lot as we know, but, uh, typically participation is very minimal. So I, please keep us updated. Communicate with, with Tim, obviously, and he can pass that information along. Hopefully this can be done. Again, ten people doesn't sound like a lot, but in the real world today, it's.
Yes, it is. So to give you a little bit of history with hazard mitigation plan in Ogumaw County, our present hazard mitigation plan that is expired was done in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And I was part of that. I was one of the contributors. I knew nothing about what I was doing, just as I normally do give my opinion. But, uh, um, that hazard mitigation plan, uh, I don't know if it cost us any money or not. But I can tell you with those meetings, the average number of people at those meetings were seven or eight of us at those meetings. So, um, there were not a lot of people at those meetings. But I'm quite a bit more aggressive than my predecessor.
Are, are individuals gonna wanna come just to educate themselves, to participate, like?
So, so they're, they literally become part of the planning process. So we want the local communities to come in and say, we see this is a hazard. You know, we have five streams in our township. And every time we get a rain, more than three inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period, we have culverts washed out and it creates problems for travel in our area and it costs us money. So we want to be able to, uh, make our culverts larger in those areas. Well, once this plan is done, they will be able to apply even as a township, not even a county. They will be able to apply as a township for a grant to pay for enlarging their culverts.
So we do, do we currently not have a mitigation plan?
We do, but it's expired.
Okay.
And, and we are in jeopardy if we were to have a major, uh, a, a, a major declaration.
Which, when those floods happened, I don't know how many years ago, five, six?
Twenty twenty.
Okay, so, uh, we didn't have one then? I guess it wasn't that considered in a?
We, we did. We were active and I applied for it. But we did not get included in the presidential declaration because most of the damages were just, uh, were, were actually, and I say just, but it's not just. The mass majority of our damages were culverts. Um, the, the road commission paid a ton of money. I think it was like, uh, two point five million dollars they paid. The, the road commission ended up paying out. I know that the state gave them some assistance with that.
So with this plan, I'm just thinking of, of locally, like what type of disasters we've had. And that's really the only thing that comes to my mind right now, thankfully. But if this plan would have been in place, would that have done anything different back in two thousand?
No, that wouldn't. But the tornadoes in seventeen, the tornadoes that went from like just outside of town, but crossed over into Cummins Township, that did. We actually got complete reimbursements from the funding from that. And the citizens were able to apply for SBA loans and were given money from FEMA to help rebuild. Now, mind you, that is not enough money to make anybody whole. It's supposed to be a combination of your house insurance and FEMA assistance and no interest SBA loans is what makes you whole again. So, but because we had the hazard mitigation plan in seventeen, then we did qualify for everything. And during those tornadoes, uh, after those tornadoes, uh, we got both state and federal assistance in rebuilding.
Any other questions? Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Wilson. Nothing? Thank, anything, Tim?
No.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. And I'll leave this with Tim for your signature next week. I, I do appreciate, and if you guys want me back in on the subject, uh, I'm more than glad to come back in. And I will set up a schedule as we move forward with the plan. I will schedule, set up a schedule with Tim, with Tim to, to come in and report regularly for you guys. So you guys know where this is. I do know our financial situation in the county. And it's just as important to me as it is to you. So, and the best way is to be on top of that instead of later after the fact saying, oh, guess what? We've got a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion items, five A, DHHS Critical Needs Fund Request.
I'm sure you probably already did that, but.
The minutes from the DHHS board are included in the iPad. The gist of it is, I think it's on the second page where there was a motion to reallocate funds two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars to the Critical Needs Fund. We just did this for fiscal year twenty-three, uh, just literally weeks ago. This one is for fiscal year twenty-four. I see that our Commissioner Serbrook seconded the motion and you may be able to address more what the Critical Needs Fund is. This is something though, that's been done, gosh, for at least five years now.
Mr. Serbik.
What the Critical Needs Fund is, is once people have exhausted all other remedies, be it through DHHS state funding, any federal, any private funds that may be available to them, like Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul, that's when they will utilize this money, like if somebody's gonna have a shut off and they have, state has enacted a new, you get one bite at the apple as a recipient of state emergency assistance funds for shut offs and things like that. So there's gonna be a real need for this. It used to be back in the past, they could apply two, three, four times as needed. And now it's gonna be a one time. If you're facing shut off, we're gonna pay your bill once and that's it. So, um, the need's gonna come up for it again. It's something historically that the county board of commissioners have done for, to my knowledge, for at least as Tim said, past five, six years anyway. You know, it's money that's already been allocated to them. It would be money that they would have to turn back or the county because it's been unspent. But again, I think that critical needs one is, is, as it says, it's a critical need. It's a last ditch to help somebody that has exhausted all other avenues.
So this is twenty-one, twenty-one?
Two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars.
Right, is that per, in the past, wasn't that five, for some reason, five thousand dollars is sticking in my head?
It, it's dependent upon how much they've spent. This is what's left over that didn't get spent. Let's say the allocation was five thousand dollars. I don't know what the last year's, the fiscal year twenty-four allocation was in. Five thousand, sounds like a, a normal figure, if I'm not mistaken. So they have spent some of it. They just wanna put it now back in a reserve fund. This excess that they didn't spend into a reserve fund for these people that fall into the five thousand dollars, my understanding is the way the five thousand dollars is allocated, they can spend that, some of that money gets spent for, um, not necessarily last ditch efforts. This is a last, you know, last ditch effort. This is gonna help somebody that's got, as I said, has run out of all other avenues to help them with their heat, with water, you know, uh, city resident, where, you know, the city kind of shut off the water for non-payment, um, electricity. So.
Commissioner Scott?
No, I don't have any question.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson.
No, I, I think we should do this. If you look how close I am to this, I was absent on that day of that meeting because I am a wage on with DHHS. But kind of like, Commissioner Serbik said, this is last minute. You know, nothing else, you know, that's there as a resource to help these people. And these are our county residents. I support it.
Mr. Rayho.
They're not gonna take that off on the new five. They're gonna put that somewhere else.
This is, this is money that was allocated for last year.
Right, in spend.
They, they didn't get spent and it goes into this Critical Needs Fund, which is a separate fund that they hold in reserve. And I think I didn't bring the minutes to my last meeting with me, um, which I can report on next meeting. But I think that right now in that Critical Needs Fund, they've got about seven thousand dollars in it, if I'm not.
Eighty-seven hundred.
Is that what it is? Okay, so.
With adding that two thousand in.
If you added that in, so by off the cuff, seven thousand's close to what's currently there.
Anything else, Commissioner Mayhem?
They're gonna ask us for another five.
We allocate five, the county board of commissioners ordinarily allocate, they've already been allocated, I believe, five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five. But this money is, gets spent differently than what our allocation is. What they do typically, like they're doing right now, add that five thousand dollars, if they don't spend that whole five thousand, they ask for it to roll into this Critical Needs Fund. The Critical Needs Fund is not funded by the state of Michigan. It's totally Ogumaw County dollars that haven't been spent of that five thousand dollar allocation. And again, it's a, somebody's last shot at having heat or water.
No, I understand.
You know, in their house. So it's, they don't, they are very, very careful about how they spend this money. They don't just dole it out. I mean, make sure these people have exhausted every resource before they hand any of it over.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Any more questions?
No.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
No.
It's not costing the county any money.
It's already been spent. You're just not gonna get two thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars back.
Correct. Just to simplify it.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Item five, be Heartland Material Management Planning Committee bylaws.
Got a copy of the bylaws on the iPad. And this is a malady that the state has requested that our regional, or eight county regional material management planning group actually adopt. Just a quick tour, uh, this would establish the voting members of the committee. Uh, that will include eleven members that are required under the statute. So the statute where the Solid Waste Management Act is, uh, embedded requires eleven municipal members and they have to represent certain categories. And I can't recite all of them off the top of my head, but they are uh, waste industry representative, recycling representative, citizen at large, environmental, something or other representative and so on. On top of that, each county that participates will have up to three members, that one will be the representative designated planning agency, which is myself, one business that produces waste. And that would include, I think, every business because every business produces waste. And one elected official from the county, in our case, Commissioner Scott. So those of you keeping score, this is a thirty-five member committee.
Holy cow.
So this'll be fun. The committee members are serving a term of five years. This is a three-year process, so we shouldn't have any issue there as well. Uh, the rest of the rules in here are just rules that you would expect to see about who serves what roles. They do allow establishing of subcommittees and how those would work. Uh, meetings are the third Friday of the month at ten thirty. We're actually hosting the meeting this month, actually tomorrow, over at the Annex. But this is also something that tracks with the inter-local agreement that we signed a few months ago with the other seven counties. So this is just the formality of getting this committee up and running. And once the state finally sets the guidelines for what we need to do, the committee will actually have work to do and we'll be off and running.
Commissioner Scott?
This is a big government act, actual paperwork exercise. It hasn't been done in the, in the state for a lot of years. I was, I was a little bit involved with it when it was back, when I was working for private business with waste management. You know, really, I don't see this, this becoming practical exercises at, 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 at the point. at the point because governments can't afford to handle materials, recycling. They can't, governments can't afford to, to, to do it, to implement and everything else. Now, there are small exceptions to that, like in this group is the material recovery facility in, in Mount Pleasant, the recycling center, Mount Pleasant is involved. There'd be some practical out of that, but to think that every county is gonna have recycling centers all over the place, no, and hiring people, stuff like that. It'll have, it, so much of this is gonna end up going on the private sector and the private haulers and everything else, so. But we'll take the steps through and everything.
Who put these bylaws together? This is all brand new. Who, who put this together?
It is. Majority of the counties use the same law firm we do. So all this has been funneled through there. There obviously were some tweaks in here for state language. For instance, when you get into the definitions and when they say, who is a designated planning agency and so forth, those are coming right out of the statute, so that's easy. But yeah, this was all funneled through the, the attorneys. This is the final product. And I expect there'll be some tweaks to it as we go. I'm sure there's gonna be some hiccup along the way that we'll need to address. But this gets us established and, and again, once the state finally drops the flag on here are the guidelines, and we have our committee ready to go, and we'll meet the guidelines, accept the grant money, and we'll be done.
I know I don't sound that enthused, but there are people in this group that are totally the other way and totally enthused about doing this.
This is mandated. We have to do it.
It is mandated. It is mandated and funded by the state, which needs to be done. If they're gonna mandate something, they need to fund it. So, the plan, they're funding a plan. And there's a lot of enthused people that wanna write these plans.
This is right up your alley. You're not enthused?
No.
Commissioner Wiltsey. Commissioner Wiltsey.
Think he's little. Right, you know, when this first came to us, this is just another one of those state moves that, you know, we have, we'll give you a little bit of money, set it up, and then in the long run, it's probably gonna cost the county money, which we don't have to do, so. I, time, again, time will tell, I guess.
Yeah.
Commissioner Serbik.
It is what it is. It's a state mandate, so.
Commissioner Ringo, anything else, Tim?
No.
Thank you. Nothing else, right, Commissioner Scott? Item five C, first quarter budget adjustments.
You had the long version, big spreadsheet on the iPads. I've got a condensed version here. I'll just walk through where these adjustments will come, and there are not many. One of them, that's not surprising, is the movement of the ARPA money, three hundred forty-nine thousand six fifty that was voted on to offset negative cash, so that will come over. We have, I kind of railed on this local community stabilization allocation because it's just one of those numbers that we just don't know. I don't know what the formula is that the state uses to send us funds. So conservatively, we budgeted a hundred fifty thousand in revenue coming into this. We've already exceeded that by twenty-five thousand eighty-one dollars, and this is just the first quarter, so that's a good thing. I just wish I could give more guidance on, you know, an estimate here than, than just throwing it at a wall and see what sticks, and one fifty clearly was too low. But that's good. Swamp taxes came in just over four thousand more than budgeted. The election processing revenue has arrived, eight thousand four fifty-five. You'll see an expense offset here in a second. In corrections, we're actually running about eight hundred seventy-three dollars more than what we projected on some of the categories and revenue. For instance, bail bond fees, you know, three hundred forty-two dollars, we reset that to zero based on recommendations, so that's, that's fine, so that's all positive. Emergency management, now we mentioned those grants reimbursement. We had a major one come through. We had budgeted twelve thousand in emergency management revenue. We received thirty-three thousand nine twelve over that, so it's actually about forty-three thousand that we, forty-five thousand that we actually see in the revenue right now. So, that's the unfortunate part to this. This was money that was already spent, but probably spent in a prior fiscal year, and we're just now seeing the, the funds come through. So that, that's something that might even catch the auditor's attention, and they may be able to do an adjustment on that. I'll, I'll leave that to them. Bottom line is, the monies that were promised did arrive. And then finally, moving ten thousand in revenue out from the animal control dog license revenue to the new animal control fund, Fund Two Seventy-Five. So overall revenues, the adjustments will be four hundred twelve thousand, four hundred two dollars in addition to what we had already budgeted. And the expenditure side, just pretty much administrative bookkeeping, there was one allocation, thirty thousand dollars for MERS defined benefit that did not make it into the consolidated line. Recall that we have this million and a half dollars that we pay every year to MERS for the defined benefit. Instead of spreading it over all the departments, they were consolidated into one line under the county general department. One of those was missed, and so I'm moving it out of, it was actually in the road patrol, a secondary road patrol activity. It just was missed. It was budgeted there. It's just now gonna be moved up to where we intended for it to be anyway, so it's just a wash, just a movement of, of that line item. On elections, we do have an increase in expenditures of two thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars. And so the eight thousand dollars that was received from the state obviously is in excess of the added expense. Back to secondary road, I'm gonna need to have a conversation with the sheriff and the undersheriff. There are twenty-five hours of overtime in the secondary road activity. We budgeted eight hundred twenty-five dollars, you know, for overtime for that activity. What's happened is, is I've gone through the time sheets and the notes that were put on there. This was mostly coverage for, what is just written as short shift on road patrol. It's road patrol activity, not secondary road, meaning it should be funded through the millage fund and not the general fund. So that's twenty-five hours of overtime that will be shifted, so we'll, we'll, we'll address that. Otherwise, this budget would be grossly over already. Yeah, corrections, there's a number of internal movements that I have to make, but bottom line is, the correction budget will see no adjustment. It'll still be the expense that, that was budgeted. But for instance, there was seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for PTO payout. When the PTO payouts were made, it appears that they all went to the wage line, which kind of makes sense, too. I budgeted on its own line, but it was wages paid out for unused PTO time. So it's just now a matter of redistributing that seventy-five thousand to where it belongs in the wages and into the social security line to offset those costs. It's not an additional cost, it's just a matter of how we accounted for it. So, all of the adjustments in the corrections right now are in that, in that category, so just all adjusted within that activity. Commissioner Wiltsey put me onto a bit of an exercise here. He wanted to know what the difference was between what we've spent in the first quarter of this year versus the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. And we spent this year just over sixty-two percent less than what we spent last year for corrections for the three fifty-one activity. And we are at, I believe it was twenty-two point three or twenty-three point two percent, at twenty-five percent of the year. We're on mark right now, actually to save a little bit more than what we've projected. Now, this is just the first quarter. I mean, the next three quarters will, will show, but right now, everything is pretty well on target, and it appears to be working fine. Other expenses, twenty-eight thousand two hundred will be removed from the general fund in animal control. Those, that budget will be moved all over to the animal control fund when we're all set and done, so that animal control activity will not appear anymore in the general fund. And there's my old friend, the district health department number two. There seems to be about a fifteen thousand dollar bouncing ball that I just still haven't figured out. So additional expense in way for district health department number two. The bottom line is a reduction in total expenditures of twenty-five thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. So additional revenue, less expense with this first quarter adjustment. And the special funds, just a couple of them, the road patrol millage, there've been some legal expenses that we're gonna wanna charge off to the road patrol millage fund rather than the general fund. You know, we'll give you, get you an email here probably tomorrow to explain situation that's involving the sheriff's office that our attorneys will have to handle for us, but because it's actually in the courts, we charge the hourly rate in addition to our retainer. There's also been some percentage of our retainer that, on normal things, that'll be charged to the road patrol millage fund as well, mostly having to do with the rank adjustments that were made and the, and the various activities with that from the legal perspective. And building inspections fund, much to my surprise and embarrassment, there was twelve thousand dollars for the rent and then a transfer out for twelve thousand for the rent. In other words, their budget looked like they were paying twenty-four thousand in rent. Brian Stein came over, pointed that out, so we'll just take that out. So their, their expenses will be dropped by twelve thousand. And then finally, we budgeted nothing for the sheriff's commissary fund. We have taken in sixteen thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars so far this year, so there'll be an adjustment to show that revenue coming in. That's the nickel tour. I mean, you're free to walk through that seventy-some page spreadsheet if you'd like, but I'll reduce this to a resolution, and it'll be ready for next week.
Commissioners, go ahead, Commissioner Wiltsey.
So yeah, I'd asked Tim for that number, especially because I was going to our Mills Township meeting on Tuesday night. But this is a number, obviously, that we, we've all been waiting to kind of see these first quarter numbers. You know, what expenses were from the seventy-two hour lockup to full operation. And Tim did state the sixty-plus percent saving costs, but this is a number that I think the people should hear. So first quarter, two thousand twenty-four, full jail operations, that was first quarter of two thousand twenty-four, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred eighty dollars and some change. First quarter, two thousand twenty-five, that's first quarter, two thousand twenty-five, jail now at a seventy-two hour lockup, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars and some change. Two hundred and eighty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars and some change. That's a difference of over four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then, Tim, I would just ask that you keep us briefed on these additional charges that we're, we're paying out for legal, so we can kind of keep an eye on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scott.
No, I think it's good news. I mean, we have a budget that has a fund balance built right into it. And we're twenty-two, twenty-two point something percent on the first quarter, which twenty-five percent is a quarter, so we're, we're running under budget. This is excellent. This is excellent. The, the fund balance is already built into the budget. So if we just come out flat hundred percent at the end, we got a fund balance. Perfect.
Commissioner Serbik.
What's the adjustments you need to do on, just corrections for an example, is just line item to line item, right?
Yes.
Bottom line, we're good.
Yeah, bottom line, again, on the expenses, expenses actually fall by twenty-five thousand, revenue going up, total of four hundred twelve thousand. Both, both trends in, in positive.
Commissioner Ringo.
Your, your budget on the twenty-four, seventy-two hour holding deal, that does include all the inmates that we have dotted around the community.
Right, so all the invoices that we've locked in, which at this point of the year, by
Part of that.
All them in, yeah.
That says inmate housing corrections, I'd line item, right? Can you, cause I, I think, are we done? I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I think that's primarily what our residents right now are, are looking to hear. And, and I was, I was under the understanding we were gonna have a pretty detailed conversation. Is there any way, maybe in the next committee of the whole, and I see this here, but you can provide us each an individual synapses of this, as far as the corrections department, I think our, our, again, like Commissioner Wiltsey said, our, our, our residents wanna see this. If this, if we have something in our hands at the meetings, if even anybody wants to see it. And if you can also email me the shorter version, I, I hate to print this off it. Any particular area? If you can send me your condensed version as well. Treasure, do you have anything to add to this?
I'm happy to hear those numbers. I'm happy to see that this county is financially getting on track.
But I really would like to see the comparison, the corrections, the last quarter to this quarter. I wanna see them side by side.
I have a question. Will you repeat your, will you repeat what you said about elections?
So you've got additional revenue reported in, and eight thousand four fifty-five, that's over and above what we budgeted.
The other one.
The other one was the overall expenses, and there are two thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars in addition to what we have budgeted.
So that's getting reimbursed, I'm.
Right, yeah, well, I think that's, but this eight thousand was more, was to offset that, so. Assuming.
It's a wash.
Little bit better than a wash.
Any, yeah, we should, yeah, we should be.
Anything else? Did you guys go over these numbers? And though you guys just had a law enforcement committee meeting, correct?
We, we, we did have, we did not go over it in detail. Tim has, but some of the numbers that have been coming through, I've been doing claims. The jail, the Gladwin jail bill did not come last claim period, mainly because they were asked not to send too many big ones in because Tracy was just coming back from that surgery. But I saw February's, February's bill from Gladwin was thirty-three thousand dollars. Thirty, yeah, thirty-three thousand dollars for the whole month of February.
Numbers, Craig, what are you thinking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said February, we're not there yet.
I'm thinking November, November, the second month, the second month. I saw the second month. I pulled it up. I looked at it, I pulled it out of claims, I made a copy of it, and I took it home with me. Okay, so I'm looking right at it. I mean, it was thirty-three thousand something or other. Medical costs, medical costs for the whole month, including prescriptions, fourteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred dollars.
So just for Gladwin?
That was just for Gladwin, okay? Now, we're getting ready to re-sign a, a medical contract with that nurse for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Yep.
A hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If I take that and say fifteen hundred dollars a month and times it by twelve months, I'm not even gonna be close. We already heard when we, when we dealt with Gladwin's Ross Common County, their medical bill was ninety thousand dollars. And where did they take their inmates? They brought them to McLaren here in our own town.
Well, didn't they have the same agency?
No, uh-uh. They knew the same agency.
There was some common similarity there.
There, yes.
And our, our was double.
Those people lived in their county.
There was something.
Yeah.
Anyways.
Not only that, as reported to us in law enforcement meeting beginning earlier, not last month, sixteen hundred and sixty dollars in food costs for the first three months. Sixteen hundred.
I heard ya.
You know, I mean, there wasn't too many shipments come off that Gordon struck for sixteen hundred dollars when it was across, when it was coming in across the street. I mean, come on. We were spending, you know, I mean, the projected budget from the sheriff's office for this year to run the jail completely was two point five million dollars. That's over two hundred thousand dollars a month.
The reason I, the reason I asked it is that I was wondering if you guys had the law enforcement committee, and you guys were able to review these numbers, and if they agreed with them. Have they seen them, if they had any, any questions?
We didn't go in that. They agree with them because they're the ones signing off on the.
I, I wanted to know if this conversation had taken place, so they could actually also see these numbers.
Yeah, well, they reported us last week at the, at the law enforcement meeting then, that their report was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in housing costs for the first three months. Hundred and eleven thousand for all three months. They had the bill for December. I, we, they didn't put it through claims, so I, I wasn't able to see it. But that, you're, you, we were spending two hundred thousand here in three months, just the housing costs, a hundred and eleven. Now, figure, figure eighty thousand dollars a corrections officer, you know, total. You know, total cost of a corrections officer, benefits, wages, everything in. Six of them, $480,000 a year. So if you think about it, it costs us in labor about $40,000 a month. Well, if it costs me 30, $40,000 to house in Gladwin, High School and Claire. And $40,000 in, in wages and benefits and everything else per month. Holy smokes. I'm gonna have a hard time spending 2.5 million dollars.
Commissioner Wiltzy, anything? Anything else, guys? You'll send that information? Thank you. Item D, animal control officer. Who wanted to take the floor on this?
I'll take it. We had the law enforcement meeting today, so we asked for an update on the animal control officer. They ended up getting 15 applicants in that position, which was great to see. Under Sheriff told us this afternoon that they have dialed it down to three interviews for next week. Depending upon who they choose and the, you know, experience that they have, they are of course going to have to do some training. And hopefully if all goes as planned, the animal control officer will be in place. You know, looking at mid, mid February, I should say. So the reason we wanted to get on the agenda tonight, they are going to be setting up the three interviews, having the three interviews next week. You know, we have had discussion about pay. And I really feel that we should have a range from lowest to highest. And then depending upon the experience of that individual, they could set that, you know, whether it be towards the high end or the middle. But I think it would be really smart for us to get this figured out because those interviews are next week.
Tim, do you have anything on this?
Well, to figure out a range, those are usually, you know, four to five year range, higher, one year, two year and so on. I'd like to make a few suggestions to you, just based on where the various ranges are within the county structure right now. And I'm just, I'm not prepared right now to give you a recommendation on which one to do, but I'll look at the comparably responsible positions and if you look at them, we can look at this next week. And if you're comfortable, we can just move forward from there. But I'm reluctant just to shoot from the hip and say it should be this much, you know, I don't want to do that. One of the points that was made at a prior meeting. What we were paying Scott obviously was pretty low. I mean, it was 14 something, I think it was a 16. And it was pretty low anyway, so we'll likely be higher with what we budgeted. I do remember, I think we budgeted $25,000 on the wage. And that worked out to, we could do 20 hours a week at 25 an hour or 25 hours a week at 20 an hour. You know, it's kind of like the play that came with that. So keeping in mind though, at 25 an hour, that's pretty close to the top wage for a deputy. So that's just the kind of comparison I want you to think about before you settle on a range. And I'm not saying that it isn't worth it, but I'm just saying you want to see how that fits into the rest of the structure.
When we were talking about this, when we were talking about this at the previous meeting, we'd asked for some comparisons. Has anybody had an opportunity to do that?
I have not.
Commissioner Sore, did you have?
Part time, they're not going to get any benefits. So you know, you're not really, I understand what you're saying, Tim. If you use the $25 figure, that's going to be close to what a deputy is making, but there's no benefits, you know, which is a huge offset. So I mean, I'm not advocating for a certain dollar amount, but I'm just saying that you can't compare a part-time
Correct.
Wage with a full-time with benefits fairly. You're not comparing apples to apples.
But I guarantee it'll be done.
Oh, sure, it will be. Some people say, well, yeah, they're making way more than I am, but you know.
Are they, are they deputized? Are they, what, what?
I think Scott was deputized.
They don't have any arrest powers.
Right, but he, whatever happens with the sheriff's where you're in as a deputy. I think he had that title.
Okay.
But you don't have any arrest power.
Okay.
He can enforce, once he gets, once they get through the training, my understanding, and it's been a long time, obviously, since I've been with this. Once they get through the training, then they can enforce animal control law. And that's it. This is an analogy. It used to be years ago in the state police, the motor carrier guys, commercial vehicle enforcement, they didn't have arrest powers either, only on commercial vehicle law. The state of Michigan has since changed that and they are now full police officers, full law enforcement officers. So there's just a narrow scope of what animal control can do. They can't go out and enforce the general laws of the state of Michigan. They are responsible only for animal control. They come across anything else. So when you get on the radio and say, hey, I've got a situation here, I need, you know, law enforcement here.
Mr. Mayhew. Mr. Scott.
Uh, I guess. I don't want to go to that high, that high end. I understand it's part time. We, I think what you want is more, more time on the street than more money in a pocket. So I'd be trying to maximize the amount of time out there. That's what Scott told us. When he would make reports, he needed as much time as he could get.
I don't recall him ever asking for, because in the winter time, he decreased his hours. In the summertime, he increased them, but I don't recall him ever coming and asking for more hours.
No, he, it's not that he asked for more hours, but he says, I try to maximize the amount of hours I'm using. Like he took the truck home so that he could leave from home and go right to, to a complaint, you know? Then didn't have to have travel time and stuff like that. Well, because he lived in the neighborhood that he mostly patrolled.
Commissioner Wiltzy.
Well, we've heard the undersheriff, since Scott has resigned, you know, the call volume and the need for this position. I would really like to see 25 hours a week and right around that $20 an hour mark and we hit our budget. But I feel strong, I'd like to see 25 hours a week.
Jesse did provide the call log, which if any of you guys are interested, she does have that as far as, and it says how many calls related to animals. She's got the sheriff, any that come through dispatch. The only thing she does not have is if somebody actually calls the sheriff's office direct, that does not come through. There's no log as far as through the dispatch. So she does have that information if anybody's interested. She did send it to me. It's, it's all calls, MSP sheriffs. All of them. She's got the amount of calls. She does have access to that information. How many calls per month? She can break it down. It only takes her brief, brief time to do that as well. So that's information any of you commissioners are interested in. It's actually pretty interesting to look at from month to month, so. I don't have an opinion. I guess I would like more information before I give an opinion. Do I think we're going to find a good candidate for minimal amount of money? Absolutely not. I absolutely not. Unfortunately, it's the way that the world is today. Again, I don't think we can compare apples to apples. When you're looking at a full-time employee, all the benefits, paid time off, paid holidays, you know, you're not looking at this for a part-time employee. Instead, they're going to be looking at the dollar amount. That's the only benefit to this job. So I'm in favor of a decent wage, getting a decent applicant and keeping them. So I would like more information before I state that, so.
I'm not ready to peg down a dollar remote. By any stretch of the imagination, I think we need to take a look at, you know, what's comparable to other counties, you know, what other counties are paying and, and, you know, whether they are full-time or part-time. You know, again, you can't just take the dollar remote and say, yeah, it's this. You've got a full-time employee versus somebody that's part-time. So if we can determine what the, the wages are in those positions and, and, you know, comparable counties. You know, surrounding us or, you know.
Correct. So.
Get a good idea as to what they are and maybe we can.
Obviously, we need this information as soon as possible, because I agree with Commissioner Wiltzy. We need this information to pass on to these three applicants. It can be deciding.
How much are they going to make?
Correct.
We're gonna hire you, but we don't know what we're gonna pay you yet.
Right, so that's not fair to them. I mean, they're trying to get this up and running and we're kind of stalling here, so. Any other questions?
Not going to make a decision now. Can we gather some information and talk about it at next week's meeting and not wait until the following committee as a whole, because I think what's going to happen too this month. Isn't there five Thursdays this month, so one week's going to get skipped.
We'll have it next week.
All right.
And then we can vote on it next week too. So Commissioner comments, Commissioner Wiltzy, comments?
Earlier in the week, I had a Zoom meeting, EDC based meeting regarding broadband. I've joined a party with a few other strong members on the EDC. We know that we have some severe broadband, lack of broadband in some townships through, through the, throughout the county. And there's this BEAD program through the state right now where they've sent us information on mapping for the county and it actually will show what areas of the township that this BEAD program will work for. So what our job would be then would be to market high-speed fiber optic companies to come in and bid that work and then hopefully we can get funding for that township. So that's pretty exciting. We know it's obviously a need in some areas. It's kind of a nobody left behind thing. For example, get our township if we can get it locked down, no matter if it's six houses or 33 and no matter the distance, every single house can have that option for high-speed internet. So I'm looking forward to working on that. EMS, we had our board meeting at four, four o'clock today. Staffing's at a really good level. Our new, a new director out there, I feel is doing a really good job. Overtime is in check. We know overtime with EMS is a big, big issue that's currently in check. New ambulance will be coming soon. That's exciting. We approved the deputy director contract, so that's moving forward. PLE meeting, we pretty much covered everything. It was a good meeting. You know, we've been very consistent with that meeting since the jail transition started. We know the importance of communication with the courts. Judge Bennett, Judge Beebe was there. There are still a few issues to work on. They're going to get in touch with Mr. McGordy from Gladwin to work on some of those. So really, it's been a success, the communication and to see that we continue to work on the challenges there. And then this past Tuesday, I had a Mills Township meeting. Good to see Bruce Beach here, supervisor and his wife. Thank you guys for being here tonight. Strong new board, some new board members, a lot of good things going on in the township. We are looking at your old building where you used to work at for a possible township hall. Bruce has been doing a lot of work on that, exploring different options instead of new construction, because we know the costs of new construction right now are just absolutely crazy and not sustainable. We're also forming a Parks and Rec Committee, which is huge. Mills Township's got some great parks. And I think this committee is going to be valuable. And then also a committee to hire a new ordinance officer. You know, ordinance officer in Mills Township is huge and we need to have somebody in place that's going to be accountable, is going to work hard and make some good changes there. That's all I have to note.
Is there an ordinance officer right now in Mills Township?
Uh, no, no.
The other thing that you mentioned broadband, remember I'm 33 suppliers with, we were seeing a lot of them and they kind of vanished. Somebody new brought them out, bought them out and then I haven't heard or seen anything more from them.
Broadpoint and
A big agency, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And that guy, whether he didn't hang with them or what, but yeah.
They were hitting all the townships, they were
Well, there was a lot of federal dollars floating around back then, you know, when the feds, if they do that again, we'll probably see somebody come in. Follow.
A lot of the township used the ARPA funds because they didn't, that was the only good use of that funding that they could come up with.
Oh, some of yours did use it for Rocket?
West Branch Township used it. Quacking Township used all of their ARPA funds for high-speed internet.
Really?
Quacking did $63,000.
Wow.
Spent of their ARPA funding. West Branch Township ran 76 down the Flowage Lake, across Flowage Lake and then up. I don't remember how much they spent, but that's what they utilized some of their ARPA funds for. I don't know what other townships did, but I know those two townships that I represented at the time, that's what they did, wasn't it?
Commissioner Scott?
Comments, wow. The, the numbers, the numbers for the, the budget, I think are great. One thing I'd tell people is the mission was not to close the jail. The mission was to cut the budget. There was no place to cut it big enough, other than the jail. Then when we started looking at numbers, my gosh, it was low hanging fruit. For every year that I've been here, we've asked the sheriff first, how, our, how, how he and then Brian Gilbert, every year we asked for savings. We couldn't get it. We needed the savings to cure the budget. We took some steps. It helped, but it wasn't enough. Now it's working. Now we look like we're going to have, have an outcome that's favorable.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, I guess, the law enforcement committee meeting. How are they liking, how's the sheriff's department liking being over there? Nobody's really said anything. I see trucks, vehicles parked over there now. It looks really, I mean, it looks nice to see. Vehicles sitting outside.
Not really saying anything to us about it. Through the, through the moving process, the sheriff did say he thought it would work out better. But lately, I haven't heard anything from him to say if he likes it the way it is or not, but.
It's a much better facility. I'm wondering if they're pleased with it. Go ahead.
Just like to add one more thing to the law enforcement committee that I didn't, I didn't add. Oh, we did ask, because obviously this is a big item, but sadly still facing us today and looks like it's going to continue. Is, you know, we asked the sheriff regarding the jail administrator position. We have a jail administrator position that is not filled. It should be filled. We need to have a jail administrator. Sadly, the stance of the sheriff stays course and we have no resolution in sight.
I, I actually called Tim on that this week because I'm just not understanding the process and he did explain it. I'm hoping I briefly understand it. You know, the stalemate is what I'm going to call it. Again, I asked kind of what the plan was and because I'm, I'm not understanding all of it and the, the pay, the position, what our plan is moving forward and what our plan is going to be as far as setting a precedence and for other departments as well. So I, I called him and I'm sure had a very confusing conversation, but I just I don't know how much of it we're able to talk about, but
I don't want to elaborate on this too much, but I guess my problem. I didn't ask the sheriff or undersheriff when we're in the meeting if they liked it or not. I don't get answers volunteered to me. I ask a question, I get a, I ask a certain question, I get a certain answer back. That's it. There's very little conversation, two-way conversation going on. You ask a question, you get an answer. That's it. That's, that's our conversation. Is that transparency? I guess it is. They answered the question. Do they elaborate on the answer? No, they give me an answer.
I appreciate the update on the jail administrator, something I don't fully understand. So please provide further information as it becomes available because individuals in the public are asking.
Can I make one more comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with you completely, Commissioner David. It's the precedence of what we have going on with the actions of the sheriff on a couple items. And it's very important, this, this precedence. I mean, you know, we want to be able to continue to work together. We know that the county where it was at and the monies that we have to save and we're, and we're showing that. But how do we continue just to let this be? I mean, what if all of a sudden I'm just using this, for example, is the clerk's office, Breck here, one day decides that she wants to do something that's not allowable. Well, you know, we say, no, we're not going to allow that. She says, well, look at the position you've taken with the sheriff. He had, how many months you've gone where you just continue to kick the can down the road. And I do not like kicking cans. And I, I was misinformed, it might have been, might have been my fault tonight. I thought that our law, legal was going to be at the EMS meeting night via Zoom this afternoon, excuse me. Because I was going to ask that question, because we cannot continue this. We cannot continue just to go from week to week, not having answers. It's, it's not, it's not right. So I'm also at that point too where something has to give here. This is not correct. This is not right to the residents of the county. And at the end of the day, I mean, it's really sacrificing safety. It's costing, going to cost more money. Look at where our overtime line is already at the jail. And we're going to have to make some decisions on that real soon. So are we just going to continue to sit here week after week and talk about this? Or what, what can we do?
Your position as a board, this is all coming down to that position allocation list. Has not been compromised. Okay, so you've got five full-time employees over there right now, but the sheriff refuses to name a jail administrator. That unfortunately, in our co-employment environment that we're in, he's allowed to do that. But that doesn't mean he can just willingly hire somebody else and, and do as he wishes. So right now, five full-time positions we're paying for. He does have a part timeline item that he can use to fill in some of those gaps. But any complaint, any, uh, consequence that comes from being down. A staff person rests solely on the shoulders of the sheriff. He can remedy this. He can name his jail administrator and then he's fully staffed. He's refused to do it. We've not allocated any more money to do this. The employees who are there, who had outranked the correction officer position, their wages have been red circled. None of them. Lost wages because of the change, but they don't gain either, because they're now in correction officer positions. And so by his choice, he's operating a person down. For the illegal promotions on the patrol side, again, we're paying deputy and one sergeant. And that's it. We're not paying the additional. So as far as our physician allocation list is concerned. And the integrity of the budget, not compromised. It's up to the sheriff now to fill that position. And we have, obviously, as you know, in the, in the grievance process right now, those promotions. But as I said to the sheriff last week, he stopped in. Doing this violates three statutes. We're not gonna condone that. We're not gonna say, well, okay. Three statutes are violated. We expect you to comply with those statutes and I believe a reckoning will come. It isn't gonna be soon enough for any of us, but it will come. Now, it looks like it'll be through this grievance process, we'll see. But that's the bottom line. So yes, it is frustrating that this hasn't been resolved. But we're waiting on the co-employer, the sheriff, to bring it to resolution. Literally on his shoulders right now. You can't tell him who to hire. You can't tell him when to hire or anything like that. That's solely his. All you can do is allocate the resources to do it.
But to add on to that, and, and the part that I don't understand is the individual that we're talking about, uh, the position that we're talking about. That individual is still getting paid for that position that no longer exists. We don't see that person still in that position, because that position doesn't exist with corrections. But they're still making that same pay, but yet they're titled something different now. So there's no incentive for him to do this. So I don't understand it neither. There's no incentive whatsoever.
Well, the other four positions, they're being paid sergeant wages too. Yeah, but they're serving correction officer role. So that's. When we have transitions like this and to maintain, um, you know, continuity, you don't reduce their wages, because we've reduced. Hours or the operation of the facility. Um, but.
But you.
Getting increases either until that wage scale catches up to where they are.
But their responsibilities and their job description has changed.
Yes.
So unfortunately. In another world, you would make the pay of what you're currently doing, not what you were doing. It's what you're now doing. So I, and, and I know what's you in it, and so I don't understand all that and I, and I really don't. That's why it's so hard for me to wrap my, my head around this. Um, I, 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 I don't.
It is convoluted. I'll, I'll agree with that.
Public service is a different animal.
So there is no incentive? We can sit here and scream and holler all we want. There's no incentive for this to be done. Zero.
Well, you're down a position.
But in their eyes, they're not.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a whole position waiting to be filled and they talk about worrying about vacations and. Sick time and, and just general time off, because they don't have enough people. They've got the resources to fill a position that would relieve that.
So when they get desperate for overtime and there is no money left in overtime. You feel that that's when it's gonna say, okay, we have to do something here.
I, I would hope they do, because again, unless you're willing to put more money into whatever. System they're trying to.
Well, let me, let me put, let me give you this. So Lieutenant Brown was here from the state police today in our law enforcement meeting. Lieutenant Brown looked at the sheriff and said that the cuts that just came down from this, or the, the raises. The raises that came from the state to, to our troopers. Are substantial.
Oh.
But what that did is they cut our overtime budget way up back. And there will be holidays and there will be days that we will not have the coverage out there that we have had before. If they can't pay overtime, they don't put a trooper on in the car. Okay, there's some law enforcement people in this county that think that the money doesn't run out. That they go ahead and they put people in the car no matter what. Cause they don't care about a budget.
Well.
And can I add to that?
Go ahead.
And this is something that I've been very consistent in stating that we're gonna get to that point very soon where that overtime budget is maxed, then the decisions have to be made. And all it's gonna do, that if we say, no, we're not gonna continue to. Pay for this, when you had all the means to do this right in the beginning, had all the time in the world to set this right in the beginning. All that is gonna do then is gonna sacrifice the safety of our courts and everyone else that's involved with this. Because we aren't gonna have the people there to do the job that's needed. So it's putting us in a really, really, really tough position here.
Agreed. And then them hard decisions are gonna be on us and we're gonna be part of the problem. So.
Well, the solution won't be what anybody's gonna want. And that might be close the whole facility.
You have to have a.
No, no, if we don't have the money, we can't afford it.
You have to have a lockup. Were we told that?
If we can't afford it, we don't have the money, you can't have the doors open.
Tim.
Yeah, the statute's clear. We, we have to have.
Yeah, well, until, uh, as far as I'm concerned, when the state comes down here with a bag full of money, then we'll keep.
I'd like to add to that, what, what Commissioner Scott is saying, I mean, you can look at some other counties around us, like, for example, Oscoda County, how they operate their lockup. They have, I believe it's one person, there's certain hours. But what we could do, and sadly, I wouldn't want this to be the case, but this might be an option we have to look into because of these costs, is we have that. So what will happen then? Michigan State Police pulls over somebody in Ogum County? They take them to Gladwin. West Branch PD pulls over somebody that's gonna go to jail, they take them to Gladwin. Our Ogum County deputies, they take them to Gladwin. And what does that do? Well, that makes our citizens less safe, because these deputies are driving over there. But we can't keep playing these games. But that's something that could happen.
Any other comments? Do you have comments?
End of the day, he's the guy that's gonna pick the guy. We can't make him do nothing.
That's my point.
Absolutely. And then, and then, end of the day, we can.
That's, but when we started talking about this. Assumptions were made that we, we could.
Right, but we can't.
We can stand firm, but.
Yeah, I don't mean nothing. He has to point him. We can't.
Correct.
Right.
Commissioner Scott.
One point you were saying about the financials, the, the. The, the administrator's job is already figured in. It will make more money than the lieutenant job did. So there is an incentive to move from someplace to, to the administrator's job. So it'll be a salary position, but it's already figured higher than the overtime made last year. And now you don't have to work the overtime and you'll get the money. But you did work the overtime last year. So if it's that particular person. It's a position. To me, it's a position. I'm not worried about who's in it.
Commissioner, right.
That is the most difficult part, is we have taken, say, you better look at the position, don't. Again, it's so doggone hard, but you cannot, the individual is still in the position. You better look at that position. You know, it's, we're, yeah, you can't force the sheriff to take him still. The jail administrators. Nobody's gonna, nobody wins with this. Nobody, none of us. Sheriff's not gonna win this board of commissioners, isn't gonna come up. There's not gonna be a winner, fortunately. It's, it's ugly and it's probably gonna get a whole lot uglier, unfortunately, and I just wish that we could. Come together and make a decision that would. Solve this problem. Which is unfortunate, but that's the way it is and. But as far as anything, I'm glad the budget's looking good so far. I'm happy to hear that and I'm sure everybody else is too, so.
Call for German.
Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner, public comment, any public comment? Come on up, state your name. What are you sorry for?
I call for a German to feel like.
Friend of Simmons.
Your name, you know the rules, ma'am?
Yes.
Wanna sit or wanna stand?
My three minutes start when I sit in the chair.
Yep, soon as the first word comes out.
First, when I sit in the chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'd have made some of this pu- public comment last week, but you made me, uh, sound like I was a wonderful person, so I didn't. Now you're gonna tell you real me. Alright. Talking about animal control, there's been two recent incidents at the shelter that could have been avoided. One incident was this dog was refused by the shelter because it was a pet and not a stray. A police officer dropped the same dog off at the animal shelter after hours. The individual who owned the dog convinced the police the dog was a stray. We'd had an animal control officer, that would not have happened, because animal control and animal shelter work very close together. Incident two, police officer brought a dog into the shelter that was severely emancipated. After shelter personnel baited the dog, they found a baseball-sized tumor in its ear and due to the dog's physical condition. Had to lay in its urine, because it could not stand up. The dog had to be euthanized. Dog should have been taken directly to a vet, not the animal shelter. That's two dogs that would not have been at the animal shelter, because see, they gotta save space for the county. So, um, it appears the county should be invoiced separately for the, for that dog that had to be euthanized as well. And, and the animal shelter right now is stuck with the dog that they shouldn't have taken, because those slots are saved for the county. When all the, when they finally get an animal control officer. Um, and I'm aware the sheriff's department has scheduled interviews for an animal control officer. But it's, it's important to remember that there's more to animal control than just taking a dog or cat to the shelter. Shelter management is also part of that team. Often commissioners and others make decisions on positions they think they understand, but they don't. They may know some things about the position, but they don't know it all. And I was guilty of that when I was sitting in the chair over there too. That is the reason EMS and nine-one-one are now authorities and they are not governed by the commissioners anymore. Therefore, I think it is essential for the animal shelter manager to be part of the animal control officer interview team. Everybody's on the same sheet of paper and there's no surprises by the person they employ or any surprises by the shelter, so they know what's going on. Cause there is a process and how that's all done. Number one, you don't, you don't take a, you don't take a pet, the animal control officer doesn't take a pet. They take strays. Number two, they don't take dogs that are ready to pass away into the shelter. They take it to a vet. Those two incidents could have been avoided. So that's why I think the, uh, animal shelter manager should be part of this interview thing to make sure that those disparities don't happen in the future. And I have one more, I have one more public comment. Three minutes not up yet.
You got thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll shorten this up. It's this long, but I'll shorten it up. Uh, last week, there was, uh, an apology given by a county commissioner. Uh, for actions that were unbecoming. Uh, and they apologized to the, the board and they apologized to the public. That commissioner did not apologize to the chairman of the board, who those. Comments were directed at. When he wanted to make more comments after he promised he wouldn't make any more comments.
You're three minutes up.
So I think an apology you do. From that, Mr. To You.
Any other public comments? Public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
All in favor?
Yes.
We are adjourned seven fourteen.